Welcome to the City of Taft Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Wednesday, March 6, 2024, being held at City Hall Council Chambers, 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California, 93268. City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are held in person with full-capacity seating and are livestreamed Public comments can be made in person and can be received for the following: Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall; Comments may be emailed to the cityclerk@cityoftaft.org; made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222; Public comments not made in person will be accepted up to one hour before the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and how about you?
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today we have Pastor Joey Pittman doing the invocation. Please come forward.
Thank you, guys. Let's bow our heads. In God, we're thankful for opportunity to do business for this great city of Taft. Pray for wisdom, guidance. You know all things, Lord, so we just pray that you help us in that process, too, to make great decisions. We thank you for that. In the name of Jesus, everybody say.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we need our roll call.
Chairman Livingston?
Present.
Vice Chairman Shirts?
Present.
John Dowden?
Here.
Kathleen Johnson?
Here.
Ron Orin?
Here.
Thank you. That means we're all present.
Yes.
Have we got any citizens' requests for public comment today? Not a problem. We all learn, right? Okay, having no request for public comment, we will move on to the minutes of the February 7, 2024, regular meeting. I'll need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Orin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Shirts?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we are now going to the public hearing on conditional use permit 2024-03 Dollar General ABC license. Director?
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. As you mentioned, the item before you this evening is conditional use permit 2024-03, which is an ABC license for the latest Dollar General that's developed in town. The applicant is Dolgen California LLC Store 24622, requesting this for a type 20 ABC license for the off-sale beer and wine for the consumption off the premises at the Dollar General store at 450 Gardner Field Road. The Dollar General store is located on the north side of Gardner Field Road, approximately 500 feet east of Highway 119. On September 7, 2022, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 2022-04 that approved the new 10,640-square-foot Dollar General store. The project was issued a building permit on June 14, 2023, with a final inspection and occupancy date of November 6, 2023.
Wow.
The Dollar General is a small-box discount retailer offering only dry goods, not offering only, dry goods, non-perishable, and limited grocery items. The proposed type 20 license is the type that limits alcohol sales to, at retail locations, to beer and wine only. Consumption of alcohol on the premises is prohibited. The applicant has provided a statement of operations that the sales of alcohol in display area will be less than 1% of the floor area in the floor plan, on the floor plan showing the general location. The statement of operations and statement of justification letter further detail the hours of operation, number of employees, security measures, and convenience of one-stop shopping for their customers. Prior CUP applications for ABC licenses were located in over-concentrated areas within the city limits. This Dollar General store is located within an over-concentrated area, Census Track 33.04, of off-sale alcohol licenses that include other markets located in unincorporated Kern County. The Census Track 33.04 is a mostly rural area of Kern County with an estimated population of 3,700 people. However, it has a land area of over 450 square miles in size, stretching from Highway 99 and the 166 intersection to the east, and Lurdo Highway and Highway 33 to the west or northwest. The area has been approved for just, oh, approved for just three type 3, sorry, three type 20/21 licenses, but currently has 10 approved licenses, and see the attached list in the attachments of your staff report. The closest license holder to the Dollar General store is the Valley Acres Market, which is about six miles to the northeast. The next closest is the market at the Shell Gas Station at Enos Lane at 119, which is about 16 miles. Two licenses are issued for markets in McKittrick, four issued to gas stations and markets along the Metler-Furnage Road, along Highway 99, and one licenses for the Chevron gas station at Highway 166 and Interstate 5. A city or county can approve additional licenses above the authorized limit, the three I mentioned, at their discretion. However, cities and counties should take into consideration alcohol and alcohol sales-related crimes within the jurisdiction, and if additional license in the area will contribute to additional crime in the area or create a public nuisance. As the Dollar General store's primary operations for the sale of groceries and other consumer products and the sale of alcohol is incidental to the sale of those items, it's not anticipated that allowing an additional off-sale license in the area will significantly impact the city of Taft with regard to additional crime creating a public nuisance. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit 2024-03 to permit Dolgen California Store Number 24622 to acquire a type 20 ABC license for the sale of beer and wine for consumption off the premises of the Dollar General store at 450 Gardner Field Road, and this item is exempt from CEQA per Section 15301. And that concludes my presentation. I do have the maps up on the screens if you want to see. It's the same map that's in your staff report, and I put some general Xs of those locations I mentioned before, if anybody wants to just kind of see the.
Unless anybody needs to see them, find, working off the maps in our packet.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's quite a large geographic area, and that's why technically it is an over-concentrated area. Basically, they try to capture roughly 5,000 to 6,000 people within a census tract.
Right.
But this is kind of that very rural gap between us and Bakersfield from, you know, above McKittrick to all the way out at Metler and Wheeler Ridge and all those areas. So there's roughly 3,700 people and now 10, and this would be the 11th store in the area, but the only one on the other side of 119.
Basically, if I understand this correctly, it's impacted because the population is so low.
It's so low.
In such a large geographic.
Such a large area, so many highways that would naturally have gas stations and markets and things like that. Eventually, it'll get.
So it is in the city limits. We do capture the sales tax of those items.
Correct.
I agree.
It is a business within the city limits.
Deal.
And if you have any questions for me, I'll answer those. And then Steve Rawlings is a consultant that is representing the Dolgen Group that handles their ABC licenses, and he's here for any questions you may have for him as well.
Do we bring him up before we open the public?
Correct.
Okay, so do you guys have any questions for Mark or our guest?
Actually, no, I don't.
Is this a, I don't understand the type of license, but beer, wine?
Period.
Is it like some hard?
Just beer and wine. So in specifying the type, the type 20 is beer and wine in basically a retail market. They call it for off-sale. The 21 is where the alcohol or distilled spirits are allowed as well. And typically, the 21 for markets is a limited license that probably has some sort of lottery-type procedure similar to La Sima, but they got the restaurant version of the allowing to sell distilled spirits or liquor, if you will. So, but Dollar General is typically just a beer-selling market and a couple of refrigerators, as you saw on the floor plan. So the 20 is limited to that. 21 gets you the liquor as well, but those are a limited number of licenses that ABC issues for that.
Okay, gotcha. Do you have any questions for anybody else?
I was going to ask him a few questions.
Please.
If you like. All right, so how's the market doing currently, that current store, and how much do you expect us to increase our sales?
The store's actually doing very well. I, you know, I came in that direction there, and I had a chance to stop by there, and I was, I always kind of check how many cars in the parking lot, how many people are there, and I was there probably about 4 o'clock. And you start getting the people that are, you know, doing some quick shopping for dinner and things like that, but it's, and then in talking to the company, it's been, it's been pretty active, very well-received. As I was kind of mentioning earlier, Dollar General is in it for the long haul, and they like to locate their stores in where they think maybe development's going to occur over the years. And it has been very good because, you know, they do have the two other stores in the generalized area there, and they've, you know, decided to open up this store, and it's, it's because there was the demand for it. And that's a busy highway, and that market wasn't being served there, so they've been pleased so far with their sales.
Great. Yeah, it's a great location. It'd be a perfect place where that, you're capturing the highway traffic, and you're still capturing the sales tax for the city of Taft, so appreciate it.
Yeah, and they put in a little bit bigger store than the other stores, over 10,000 square feet. And as we were kind of talking about it, it gives them a little bit more breathing room, and they inventory something like 10,000 different SKUs, which is stocking units, which is amazing for a 10,000-square-foot store.
It's a lot to see, that's for sure.
And it's, it's, it's been very well-received in all the communities because you can pretty much get just about anything that you want there. And so it's, they're excited to be here, and, you know, for the record, we do agree to all of the conditions of approval set forth by your staff.
It seems to me that the thing about that store is it's expanded more in the food area than the other two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that extra square footage they've put into freezers and refrigerators, so.
Yeah, and that is, that's, that's part of the reason for the, you know, because the freezers take up a little bit more space, and so, and the food sales are very, very consistent, and that's what draws people on a regular basis. You always need milk, you always need eggs, and that's what the consumers are demanding on a regular basis.
Looks like you might be capturing some of the parts from Cuam of Maricopa. You're capturing more of that right there.
Yeah, and as somebody said, you know, a lot of, a lot of people that are working, that might live in other places, a perfect opportunity for them to stop on their way home to pick up some goods and the sales tax stay right here in the city of Taft.
Which we always appreciate.
So, anyway.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anything you want to share? Anything else?
Well, hey, it was a nice drive up here. I was telling somebody, I went to a Taft junior college football game in the 80s.
All right.
Just as a small thing. My good friend in college grew up in Wasco and had gone to Taft College, and he told me, he goes, "Oh, yeah, that's one of the best football teams." I was like, "Yeah, what?"
Back in the day, yeah.
So we went up to stay with his family for the weekend, and we went down to a Taft football game, and I was impressed, so.
Well, thank you, sir. Thanks for the drive.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. If anybody else has any comments. If not, then we're going to close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
All motion.
Second. I think I got a bunch of them.
Additional use permit 2024-03.
Read it.
For the beer and wine license for the Dollar General store.
And we're going to need that 1, 2, and 3 read, unfortunately.
On the second page, Ron, read the number 3 item about the exemption.
I don't have number 3.
I got it. Find this project exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Equality Act, CEQA, as set forth in Section 15301 of CEQA guidelines existing facilities. Is that correct, sir?
Yep.
Any else?
No, just, we have a, we had a second, didn't we? Okay, okay. Then we just need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Orin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Shirts?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes. And that passes on 5-0. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll be moving on to the Planning Director's report. I've heard that. Okay, Mark, Planning Director, report.
Thank you again, Chairman Livingston. The only thing I'm going to go over today is we're moving forward with the process for the housing element update. The consultant team from Fresno is ready to come down and meet everybody in person and start the workshop process. You may have seen flyers in the driller. They're going to be in the driller every week through the second meeting, which is on March 21st, but you might see this flyer as well. We posted it on the Facebook page, on the city website, latest news, and you have a flyer in front of you. The one thing we do ask, if for some reason the two Thursdays don't work for you, if you could, use your cellphone and capture that QR code and go through the survey. It's just nine, 10 questions, and it's a real simple semi-demographic semi, what kind of preference, you're looking at a type of housing types you want here or think are needed here type of thing. So this flyer captures both workshop dates, which is March 14th, March 21st, both Thursdays, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Transit Center in the Oil Dorado Room. So similar to what we did for the specific plan, there will be no streaming recording type stuff as we did last time. Part of that was just to capture everybody who wasn't physically there during the last steps of COVID. This time, we will post the presentation that's given there on the city website, where we're keeping everything under the Housing Element tab of the Planning and Development section of the website, so go there. If you miss everything, these flyers will be there, the QR code's there, links are there as well, if you don't want to do the phone option, to do everything on the computer as well for the survey, but you could do it in under five minutes pretty much, because it's mostly pick-your options, and then there is an open area as the final question, so you could give input that wasn't covered by the survey question. So we really want to get that input. Everybody did a great job. Eight years ago in 2015, we had, I think, over 130 respondents, and they were all, from what I could tell, legitimate. We had no funny business with it, you know, comment-wise. So just looking for everybody to participate, share this with folks. I had some copies at the chamber. I'm going to have to put some more back there. I noticed that sit and sip, they were already taken or whatnot, so do what you can to share it with others and.
Post in the restaurant.
Yeah.
Yeah, give me a couple of copies.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that they can find this link to the survey under that same tab you were talking about.
Correct. Pretty much every flyer that's out there has a QR code in some form, either in the newspaper, Facebook posts. The flyers at the chamber was kind enough to do a resend on Tuesday when they sent out their Tuesday e-blast. You'll see it there as well. If you get their regular email, you scroll through and you see it, you could do the QR code that way as well.
Good.
So any way to provide that input, and then if you're able to show up in person at one or both meetings. The 14th meeting is going to be more of kind of a overview. They're going to kind of go over housing elements again, 101, why it's needed, why it's, and how the state's requiring it of us. And the real meat and potatoes will be the 21st, which is getting into what programs we're looking at that we need to do, tweaks to the zoning code, this go-around based on new state law that's passed, and anything else that they're looking at, because we've been working on a lot of the technical stuff, buttoning up the drafts I've shown you last year. Now we're trying to get the feedback from the community and then get that into the document as well. And the big one, which I had mentioned before, is the AFFH, which is Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing. And that's the big part of it, where it's a kind of big analytical GIS exercise of taking this data that the state has of whatever our demographic mix is here, of income and job opportunity and air quality and all that kind of stuff, and then analyzing how does that affect what we have as potential housing options in town.
Okay.
So I have the flyer up on the TV screens here as well, but spread the word. If you need anybody to have me email off a digital copy of this, so they can scan it off of their computer at home or whatever, just let me know. But I'll try to make sure it's showing up semi-regularly over the next two-plus weeks on our city Facebook page, and I'll make sure the link is there as well, if people prefer to click and do everything on the computer as well, and not just QR code, cellphone-type stuff.
Yeah.
I have a quick question to clarify. When we do this, we're city limits only.
No.
But it does include the general area, correct?
It will. There, one of the first two questions is, "Where do you live?" And it says, I think it's Taft City surrounding neighborhood and outside of Taft.
Okay.
And we're open and capture both Taft City, and we welcome every Ford City Taftites and South Taft person to participate as well, even though we're not looking to annex and really put everybody inside the city limits. The housing choices are all, there's no real line on the ground.
They're intermingled and.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the services are here from school districts to every other service that's provided in the general area.
And.
Thanks, Mark.
And we provide a substantial portion of those within the city limits, so.
Correct.
It's, you know, the others each have an elementary school, and that's about it.
Right.
And for anybody who's watching the YouTube replay of this, that it's important to us that as many people as possible contribute, because we don't read minds.
And at the next meeting in April, when I give a similar update of how these went, in between all that, we will be meeting with the oil tech kids as well to get a little student input. It worked out well for the specific plan back two years ago, I think, when I visited. So looking to get the same input from them again. Mr. Pennegras really runs a good ship there, and the kids are actually surprisingly engaged last time, so I brought it up to our consultant team, and they're really excited to meet with those kids, too, so.
I bet. Okay, we are going to be moving on to item 5, but we are not having item 5 because our city attorney is not present. But we know what he would have said anyways.
He relayed no statement to me.
Yes. No statement.
No statement, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Okay, item 6, Commissioner comments. Anybody have anything to say? I think we'll start with Ron's side and work our way over to Dennis's side.
Oh, just appreciate your wall washes. We're continuing. Thank you.
I do have something to say about the food bank. Labor of the Harvest is closing down. And I volunteer there one night a week, so I just found out about it last week. Their last night will be the 14th, so let's remember to support the other food banks.
I got a few things I want to bring up.
Okay.
Kiwanis has been doing a bike rodeo. Greg Mudge is running that. So anyone that's got any bikes laying around or know anyone that has one laying around, even if it isn't perfect condition, it could be refurbished some and, you know, tires repaired, whatever, get ahold of Greg, and that'd be great. I think he's got like a 100-bike goal.
Wow.
And I want to say in Sparks, Nevada, the Kiwanis there has a storefront that, that's what they do, is they do a lot of bike. So they're going to go down there, I think this weekend, and get like 30 bikes from them, so that was pretty cool. So he's been working hard on that.
Question about that.
Yeah.
Do you offer to teach kids how to change repair tires?
I don't think the Kiwanis is doing that, but I, I do know there's some, I think Taft City and Taft PD are working together to help get helmets and some safety gear and some safety courses, but that's a good thing to bring up as far as like, hey, how to work on them. It's kind of like a life skill.
Yeah, I think so.
Goat head heaven here.
Goat head heaven.
Yeah, lots of slime, and yeah. That's a good thing to bring up. I'll bring it up to Greg.
I know that my dad, back in the day, when he would repair a tire, he would cut out the tube and kind of like those little inserts that you put inside of your tire, and he would, he would coat it with the old tube, you know, cut out to, because of the goat heads.
Yeah.
Make the, now you can buy those things, but that was always the way it was done for years.
It would be wonderful if you gave that skill to these kids.
I know, we need all, like, solid rubber tires here.
Yeah.
Right.
Practically.
I'll bring it up. That's a good, that's a good idea to teach kids, because I grew up without a dad, and I didn't really have someone teaching me. I had to learn as I.
That'd be amazing workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is definitely cool when you have somebody can do that. My dad had me learning how to change the tires as soon as I needed a bike, because he wasn't going to do it.
And they're expensive. I mean, they get expensive over time, and, or you get stuck down a hill. I would ride down and get on the other side of town, get a flat, and I had to walk it back home. It's like the walk of shame, I don't know. Old Dorado's about a year and a half away, just over a year and a half, so they're starting to plan their one-year kickoff, so hopefully we can get the buzz going on that. Fox Theater is open for business. Surprisingly, a lot of people still don't know that's open now, so I hit a lot of people up, and they act like they hadn't heard about it. So just trying to get the word out. If, if we don't use it, it won't survive, so.
Correct.
Luckily, we've had some good donations, and we're safe short-term, but use it. It's a great place to watch a movie, and it's cheaper, and saves you from driving to Bakersfield, and it's usually not crowded. I go quite a bit. I enjoy it, so.
And not only that, but the Park and Rec is, you know, using it as an opportunity to teach some of their young kids how to do, be business-friendly, how to help do customer service. And if we can keep that part running, they will be looking for other things to do out of the theater that will make it an even greater part of our community. But it, it still needs to have that base of operational expenses taken care of, and the movies would be the best way to do that, as far as I can see.
Exactly. Yeah, at least keep it, you know, where it can stay open and maintained, that'd be. And then I guess the Houchen Blood Bank's been struggling to get people, they moved down here to the urgent care, and apparently people weren't seeing them, so they forgot about it, and they're supposed to move, they're going to move back up to Chamber, where it's more visual, because people just forget about it.
Fourth and Kern is a much more obvious place.
Yeah, so stop and make your donations. That's all I got.
So I got Sheri and Felix, they're selling out the Pizza Factory, and so the 11th to the 14th, the 14th being the last day, so if you had a chance. 14th, the 14th being the last day, so if you get a chance, stop by, say thank you if you have any fond memories of the Pizza Factory, and Felix and Sheri, so.
Thank you.
Good news.
My only comment is yesterday was an election day, and we've been switching to some newer equipment, and the community was great, about willing to stand for changes that have been made to their voting preferences by the state. And I thought it was a, it was a pretty good experience, given that it was going to be a low turnout election anyways. I really made an opportunity for us to really work the system better, too, but it was, our citizens were good. They came in, they were polite, they put up with us having to go through a whole process just to change their registration, so it was excellent. I really enjoyed it. And I guess we're now at item 7. I'm still volunteering unless somebody else feels the urge to run up to the podium and tell the city council what we're doing.
You all, the.
I volunteer you.
Unless there's any qualms about that, we'll just move on to an adjournment. I'll just need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, voice for, all is in favor.
Aye.
We're done. Thank you.